Good morning. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the Redevelopment Authority. Today is November 5th, 2020. It is 8:32 a.m. We are in the Bob Boldrick Theater at the Community Center at 851 East Williams Street. Tomorrow, can we have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Giomi.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Supervisor Barrett.
Acting Mayor Bonkowski.
Here. Thank you very much.
Of course, present.
I'm going to read a disclosure into the record, and then we will move on to our blessing for the day. The State of Nevada and Carson City are currently in a declared state of emergency in response to the global pandemic caused by the coronavirus. In accordance with the Governor's Declaration of Emergency Directive 6, which has suspended the provisions of NRS 241-020, requiring the designation of a physical location for meetings of public bodies, Carson City will not have a physical location open to the public until such time as this directive is removed. Members of the public who wish to provide live public comment may do so during the designated public comment periods indicated on the agenda via telephonic appearance by dialing 408-418-9388. Please do not join by phone if you do not wish to make public comment. Thank you. Now, we're on Agenda Item 3, our invocation. This morning, we have Pat Propster from Cavalry Chapel. Good morning, Pat.
There we go. Well, in light of what you just read, I'm going to read something. In the Word of God in Philippians, Chapter 4, it starts out with rejoicing in the Lord always. And Paul writing them says, "Again, I say rejoice." So when I see something in the Word of God once, it's important. When you see it in the Word of God, it's imperative. So it's rejoice always in the Lord. Again, I say it's to rejoice. Let your gentleness be known to all. The Lord is at hand. Lord, we come before you this morning, and as the Scriptures continue, we need to remind ourselves what Paul wrote to the Church of Philippi. And, Lord, he was saying for them to be anxious for nothing, but in prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, let their requests be known to God. And the peace of God, which passes all understanding, will guard their hearts and their minds through Christ Jesus. Lord, we want you to do that this morning, Lord, in this global pandemic that we're having, and then even in our town right now, Lord, with the numbers going up. Lord, we pray for a cure. Lord, we pray for this to stop. We pray for folks to do what they need to do to stay safe. We ask you that you would be with this constituency this morning, that you would give them wisdom and guidance and counsel. But, Lord, we would remember to rejoice. We would remember not to be anxious and get all frustrated, because, Lord, in anxiousness, we can't make clear decisions. We need to have your peace rule in our hearts. Paul went on to say that finally, brethren, whatever is true, whatever things are noble, whatever things are just, whatever things are of pure, and whatever things are lovely, whatever things are of good report, if there's anything virtuous, if there's anything praise-worthy to meditate on these things. Lord, so we want to clear our minds and then focus on those things. And, Lord, people act the way they think. So, Lord, I just ask you that the anxiousness would go down. Lord, we've got a lot going on around us. And, Lord, we ask you for your peace today. We ask you for your guidance. Lord, would you bless each one of these here today and the decisions that they make for this community, for this state, Lord? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you for those wise words, Pat. And could I ask you to lead us in the pledge this morning?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're now on Agenda Item 5, our first public comment period. Is there anybody on the line for public comment?
I see no public comment this morning.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 6 for possible action, approval of the minutes. Have the board members had a chance to review the minutes?
I move approval of the October 1, 2020 minutes as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The vote is 402 approve. Nancy, any items to be pulled off the agenda?
No items to be pulled.
Any board members want any items pulled? Seeing none, then the agenda shall be adopted as published. We're now on Agenda Item 8, the consent agenda. Any board members want any items pulled off of the consent agenda? Seeing none.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Vote is also 402 approve the consent agenda. We'll now move to Item 12A for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding authorization of a proposed lease assignment between Sterling Air Limited and Carson Tahoe Executive LLC for the assignee to assume an existing ground lease. And who's going to take this item today? Is Ken here? Moen?
Pam, good morning.
Good morning. Want to take us through this, please?
Yes. The Sterling Air Limited has been a long-term tenant of the airport. Steve Lewis is on the line, and Steve has received an offer to purchase his assets, which include a hangar and adjoining office space. And that offer came from Jeff Pickett, who is the sole member of Carson Tahoe Executive LLC. Once we received a letter of intent, we provided a checklist for compliance for the purchaser to meet in order to have the lease assigned and operate as a Class 1 FBO as defined in Title 19. They met those criteria, and at the October 21st Airport Authority Board meeting, we approved the lease assignment and now have brought it to the city for final approval.
Steve, do you have anything to add?
Oh, good morning. No, the only thing I would like to add is I've been operating on the airport now for just over 45 years, and I just want to say that the airport in this community has been very, very good to me. The people that will follow me are really going to bring this side of the airport into the 21st century. It will really become an economic engine for our community.
Thank you, Steve. And if you're moving off into retirement, good luck.
Well, I'll call it semi-retirement. I tried that for a year, Brad, and I've been an ultimate utter failure.
Did Steve Takeus on the line?
I'm not aware, Brad, that he was coming today or be present today.
Just wanted to see if he had anything to add. Any questions from the board members?
No, but I'd like to make a comment and thank Steve for 45 years of service to the community and wish him well in his semi-retirement like him. I failed at retirement over and over. I'm just not good at it. Thanks. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, John. If there are no more comments, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the ground lease assignment.
We have a motion in two seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Vote is 402 approve. We're now on Agenda Item 13. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Steve. We're now on Agenda Item 13A for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding a proposed resolution for a temporary interfund loan in the amount of $1,392,400, and let's not forget the 80 cents, from the general fund to the grant fund. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm allowed to take this off, yes?
You are.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you, Pamela Ganger, Deputy CFO. Historically, the city's general fund loans amounts to other funds to bring a potential negative cash balance up to zero at the end of the fiscal year, when, due to the timing of receipts and expenditures, it appears the fund might have a negative cash balance at the end of the year. In this case, the grant fund incurred approximately $2 million of COVID-related expenses, which were reimbursable by the CARES Act grant. Prior to the end of the year, the grant fund didn't have enough excess cash to cover this and therefore incurred a temporary cash shortage. If approved, this would be a year-end adjustment for financial reporting purposes dated June 30, 2020, and it would be repaid in July. We're not allowed to have a negative cash balance per Governmental Accounting Standards Board on our financial statements. The city received the first half of the $10.2 million from the state on July 28th and the second half on September 28th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Lori.
So, just for the record, this interfund loan would allow us to remain in compliance with the Budget Act to make sure we don't have a negative. And again, it's just a short-term turnaround.
Exactly. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll take a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2020R21.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Did you vote, Lori? I didn't hear you, Lori. Did you vote? Okay. Any nays? Vote is 402 approve. Thank you, Pam. We're now on Agenda Item 14A for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding a tiered residential stormwater user fee for the stormwater utility and creation of a utility rate fee structure for the water, wastewater, and stormwater utilities. Good morning, gentlemen. You going to start, Darren? Or Andy, are you going to start? Got it pulled up? Andy, you'll start.
Thank you. For the record, Andy Hummel, Wastewater Utility Manager for Carson City. So this item today, I thought I'd kind of start with a little bit of background explaining why we're here, kind of set the stage for what we're trying to accomplish. Over the last year and a half, Far West Engineering has prepared and presented, recommended rate revisions for our three utility funds, the water, wastewater, and stormwater. It's a fairly involved process, as you, I'm sure, remember, especially on the stormwater side, due to developing new rate structures and vetting those multiple times through the Utility Finance Oversight Committee and public process. And in March, on March 5th, 2020, the water and wastewater study was presented to this board with the proposal of water at 3% and wastewater at 3.5% annual increases. The intent with that approval was implementation on July 1 of this year. However, due to COVID shutdowns occurring literally right after that meeting, that was held for a while until we knew what the world was going to look like. And then, as things kind of started settling out, knew what we're kind of looking at, in August, specifically August 6th, that meeting, the stormwater study was presented to the board with new rate structure and rates. The new structure was based on flat-rate residential billing and then a tiered by impervious area, basically grouping the remaining parcels, all the commercial, non-residential parcels, into various impervious area sizes. The residential rate was proposed to increase from our current charge of $5.69 to $9.34 over a three-year period and would generate approximately $1.8 million once it's phased in. So with the board approval from those two meetings to move forward with rate implementation process for all three of the funds, staff started the business impact statement process in that review period and preparing ordinance changes to Carson City Municipal Code, specifically Title 12, where the rates are currently documented. We did receive feedback on two things, namely that considerations should be given to possibly doing a tiered residential rate structure to kind of create a little more equity on that side, and then also consider doing a utility rate fee schedule where all the rates would be listed on a single document, which would be referenced by Carson City Municipal Code. So I was going to start with the residential tiered rates option, kind of go over what we came up with on that side. This concept, it's still, we held the same general rules or, you know, that were established in how we were going to do the original flat-rate residential, which is shown on the top line there, the single-family residential. Basically, with the August 6, 2020 approval, what was proposed was January of '21, the rate would go to $6.91, and then in 2022, it would go to $8.12, and the final increase would happen January of 2023 of $9.34. That would be charged to 100% of our residential customers. There's just under 16,000 customers today, and that revenue at phase-in, just under $1.8 million. So, looking at data that we had, the Assessor's Office database does have a, they do list structure size for properties, number of stories, things like that. So we downloaded that data and put it in a spreadsheet and started looking for patterns, what seemed to fit using that structure size as kind of a surrogate for impervious area on the parcel, what the rain would run off of. And ultimately, we kind of came up with three categories there, kind of a small, medium, large, if you will. Those three categories, as shown in the bottom part of this graph here, the first one, a single-story structure, less than 1,600 square foot, or a multi-story, less than 2,400 square foot. We set that, basically, the multi-story about 50% bigger than the single-story. Usually, a multi-story, the garage is on the first level, some more area there, so it's, you know, the second story of the house usually doesn't mirror the first, so kind of how we settled on that. That number of parcels in the database accounted for about 61%, so just under 2/3 of our properties in Carson City. And then the second category, single-story, from 1,600 to 2,400 square feet, multi-story, 2,400 to 3,600. And then the final largest category, single-story, greater than 2,400 square feet and multi-story, greater than 3,600. And those two categories, about 30% in that middle category and around 8% of the properties in that final one. And then, to establish the rate, we basically looked at that revenue that was generated under the August 6 approval, the $9.34, and calculated into appropriate rates for those three categories, landing on phased-in after three years. For the first category, the smallest, $7.50. For the middle one, $12.50, and for the biggest, $15, and that generates approximately $1.85 million, so about 50,000 more. Oh, sorry. Yeah. So that, yeah, so for those three categories and the rates, for the smallest category of $7.50, the middle category, $12.50, and the largest at $15, once phased-in, generates a revenue of $1.85 million, so about 50,000 more. And this is all based on data that's readily available in the Assessor's database. We've already, IT is looking at how to write a script that would easily pick that up to be able to categorize those properties. And then just a kind of a reminder of all the rates that we're looking at on the stormwater. The top two lines or sections of that graph, the top one is that previously approved flat-rate residential rate, and then again, what this would look like for the tiered single-family residential by that structure size. And then the bottom, again, is what the non-residential grouped impervious area parcels would be billed. So I showed that through 2024 on this graph, as the very large category under that grouped impervious does have a final increase in 2024. And then on to the next one in your packets, there should be a utility rate fee schedule. I can pull that up if there's any questions, but we did apply the changes that would be created from the ordinance changes to Carson City Municipal Code, and then working with legal, pulled the applicable sections that list all the rates into a separate document. This would, if approved, that creates that utility rate fee schedule as a standalone document, and then would be referenced by Carson City Municipal Code moving forward. What, that really does two things. It simplifies the documents for the customer. They don't have to get into Carson City Municipal Code. It's one single document will list all the utility rates and fees. And then, secondly, it also simplifies future rate revisions from the stance that Carson City Municipal Code would not have to be revised. It would be the utility rate fee schedule. It would still be a very similar process. Study would need to be done, presentation through the public process, coming to this board for final approval to make sure that that process is taken. So what we're asking for today then is requesting direction to bring forward that tiered residential rates as part of the final stormwater rate approval, and then also using that developed utility rate fee schedule to be referenced in ordinance with our final ordinance changes to be brought forward in the future. Both of these options were included as potential options in the business impact statement process and highlighted to point out that, you know, one of these two could be used in the final approval. And with that, that closes my presentation. For any questions?
Darren, did you have anything to add before we go to questions?
Just one thing, Darren Schultz, for the record, I was going to say that that, it probably goes without saying, but the business impact statement, that that process is currently underway, rolling forward, and that we would be bringing that back here in two weeks, the meeting in two weeks, the first reading and the results of that business impact statement that is on the street. The other thing I was going to add is that on the stormwater side, Andy did an excellent job of going through where we've been with the rate study and, you know, cost of service. But some questions were raised about, you know, what are we doing in stormwater right now? We did come back a few years ago for a bond to just pay the first grouping of immediate need of stormwater projects that we had, and they were specifically needed to be funded because they were parts of other projects that were going to take place. And if we didn't, if we didn't do the stormwater as part of those projects, we had the potential of having to go dig things back up once there was new pavement, new concrete. So that bond for the top six projects, if you remember on our 10-year CIP, so those are very well underway, almost done. The majority of that money of that bond, that approximately $5 million bond, the majority of that was used on the Carson Street project, the one that's underway now, as well as projects that go from Carson Street and take water to the east, into the river, into the channel. So that money is, as of today, mostly spent on those projects, and they're done. And then there was some remaining funds in there for small, we categorized them as small stormwater projects. And the goal there is, again, if we have a, if we have a larger capital project that's going on and there is a stormwater component to it, where, you know, if we had $50,000, we could also do the stormwater part of that project. So that's what that smaller category was for. So I just wanted to put on the record that that money is going to good use. It's being interjected into ongoing capital projects so that we just dig once, we go into an area, we fix it all right, and then we're out of there. So just a little background in terms of that money that has already been spent. So, any questions?
So just a couple of questions. On the tiered residential rate, will the square footage include, what are you going to do with a detached garage? I just want to make sure you're going to count the detached garage in the sizing versus an attached garage?
Yeah, I would look at all the structures.
Okay. And then I want to go over, I want to thank the public for their comments, and so we did get them, and they are on the record, just in case they're listening, and I really appreciate your guys' work to come back and propose the tiered residential structure, because I think that fits better the community needs to be able to still do what we need in stormwater, but be appropriate and fair to all the residents, just like we tiered the business structure. So thank you for that extra work. I think it is very valuable and well done. Can you also talk to me, though, I had received a lot of public comments, that their thoughts are that we're only doing this because new development is not paying their own way for stormwater, and I would love for you to explain to them what types of projects we're working on and what new development is required to do when they bring a development to fruition?
Yeah, absolutely. As far as the types of projects in the CIP, the 10-year CIP that we're trying to fund here, that's a lot of, you know, rehab of existing infrastructure. We have things that, when they were installed 40, 50 years ago, the standards were much lighter than they are today, and they just don't have the capacity that we need. And also areas that, you know, if we were to add drainage to it, we'd be able to improve either, you know, our maintainability of that or the protection level we're able to give to those residents. Stormwater is a little different than like a water or wastewater type situation, where until that property develops, we really don't know what that impact is going to be, but through the engineering and design process and the permitting process, they are also required to offset that. So the impact to our existing system should be pretty minimal, or they need to improve the downstream conveyance till it works. So as far as, you know, this being able to, you know, enable more development, I really don't see the types of projects that we have doing that.
I agree with Lori. I think the tiered rate structure serves our citizens better, and I really appreciate you guys going through and working on that. I just, I want to make sure it's just a couple of things, because I know we've got Parks item on the agenda today that also is looking at doing a fee structure similar to this. So I would just, you know, my druthers are that they sort of, if we're going to do sort of a fee structure thing like that, that we work together to sort of make it look cohesive instead of looking like we're two different businesses with two different logos and two different structures, and I just think it's confusing to people when you look at one document, it just looks different from another document, and we're all the same city. So I just mentioned that to the city manager as well, and I don't want to hold anything up. If it doesn't happen right away, that's fine. I just think a goal should be, if we're going to do a full-on rate structure, whether the rates are from the sheriff's office or Parks or Public Works, that we do it in a way that's cohesive and well-thought-out. The other question I have is I want to make sure, and I think, I know the answer to this, but I want to make sure that in the ordinance or in the rate structure, there's enough opportunity for public comment. So whether that's, UFC is spelled out, or whether public hearings are spelled out, or whatever it is, I think it's critical that we give the public an opportunity, because when we're not doing it by ordinance, we lose one opportunity for the public to comment, because in an ordinance fashion, they've got two opportunities at minimum. So I just want to make sure that there's enough public input to that process. And finally, just asking Dan, why wouldn't, like with a rate structure thing, a resolution be needed when we're setting a rate structure? Because a resolution could be done at one board meeting. Why doesn't it have to be done by resolution?
If I understand the question correctly, it's a question of adopting this via If I understand the question correctly, it's a question of adopting this via a resolution or adopting this via ordinance. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously it is going to be adopted by reference in ordinance. And I guess what I'm asking is, I don't think I have a qualm about that.
I think I understand your question supervisor and, you know, I'll just weigh in on there are, you know, two or three different considerations at play here. The idea of incorporating a rate structure by a reference in an ordinance would actually make it easier in the future for codification purposes. So when you incorporate something by reference, you have in essence a separate standalone living document. Now that does not circumvent, you know, a public hearing process because by statutory authority and mandate and NRS, any adoption of a, of a fee schedule where there's going to be an increase of a rate, it needs to come back to the board of supervisors anyway. So whether you do by resolution or whether you do it by incorporation by reference, we still come to the same effect. So there would be ample opportunity for public input and for a public vetting and approval by this board as the ultimate authority of the local government. But in addition to that, a resolution by itself would not be able to supersede or revise any provision that currently exists in CCMC. So if you were to do simply a resolution adopting different rates, you wouldn't be able to amend any of the existing provisions in CCMC. So that's, that's not actually feasible under the circumstances. So in any event, you would have to go to CCMC, you know, to revise, in which case you would have to adopt an ordinance. But then the second layer of this, which is to incorporate by reference, a separate standalone document. In the future, if any changes were to be made to the rate structure, you wouldn't have to go back into the ordinance provisions to make those amendments. And instead, all you'd have to do is come back to the board and make the amendments to the separate standalone document which sets forth the rate schedule. So what that would help circumvent then and to make things easier and to speed up the process would, that would essentially allow this board to, you know, to step away from having to go through two separate hearings for first and second reading with an ordinance and you can just leave the CCMC provisions as they are.
Okay. Yeah, I got the majority of that. I was just curious about adopting the rates just as reference as opposed to a resolution. So those are all my questions. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, first of all, I want to compliment Supervisor Jelmy for raising the matter regarding transparency. That's one of my big issues and I'm sure he'll carry that forward. And so will Lori, our mayor-elect. Secondarily, I want to compliment staff for the residential tiered and echo what the mayor-elect has said. And third, I have no questions. Looks good to me.
So if I can ask, by doing the separate fee structure, which I agree with because I hope someday that we actually have a book of all of our charges and I like Stacy's idea. So I think that's one of our goals anyway that we've been talking about. So the public could go one place and find any fee that they might have to pay. When we change a fee, though, we also are required, if I'm not mistaken, if it's enough to do the business impact statement. So they'll, the public will still be noticed with a specific document that we're doing a business impact. So that's why I'm comfortable that besides this meeting that would come before the board to change a fee, they get a specific noticing on a business impact statement. Right? That's correct. The business impact statement's still needed.
That is correct. That would be a statutory mandate.
That gives me a comfort that there's that secondary notice that's actually out there. So, thank you.
All right. Well, I'll make it unanimous. I think that the tiered rate structure is the way to go. So thank you staff for that. I think it's more equitable. Most of the feedback that I've received has been from the small users or small residential unit owners or tenants who are saying, why am I going to pay the same rate as somebody living in a 5,000 square foot house on an acre? So this will provide some equity. Once the program's fully implemented, the rate for the, this, we'll call it the small residential classification is going to be half of what it is for the large. So that should provide some equity there. My understanding is that there are some additional components to this that will come back at the next meeting, such as how we're going to handle residential office-owned properties that are used as primary residences and not as office. Also properties that contain multiple parcels. So we'll deal with those at the next meeting, correct?
Yes, those are in the, the physical ordinance changes.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Well, is there any additional discussion? Any questions? All right, then we'll accept the motion.
Okay. I move to direct staff to include a tiered residential stormwater rate structure and a utility rate fee schedule when developing the proposal to change user fees for the water, wastewater and stormwater utilities.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd just like to thank staff once again for all your work on this. It's been a long time coming. And I would also like to say pertaining to Andy's comments at the start of his presentation regarding, or actually it came from Lori and then Andy answered it, that Carson City in the past, when they started a stormwater fee, they just picked the number out of the air, which I believe was a dollar per parcel to start the fund. And over the years, actually over the decades now, there have been a few attempts to try to update and modify our storm drainage utility, which of, I want to use the word failed, but they really were not comprehensive. They were just incremental changes that never got us to where we needed to be. So we've never had a comprehensive storm drainage system in Carson City. This will take a huge leap forward to correct that and provide the funding so that we can build a comprehensive storm drainage system to convey water from the west to the east. As Bob used to always say, the water comes from the mountains in the west and it has to go through town to get to the river on the east. So it's got to go right through town. So our job is to convey it without causing property damage. So with that, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Vote is four to zero to move forward with that direction. We are now moving to Agenda Item 14B for discussion only. Discussion and presentation on the summary reports for the Carson City Facility Condition Assessment and Reserve Study. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, Board. Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director for the record. I've got, I'll try to run through just with a quick introduction. We have our consultant, Dean Leonard, with Faithful and Gold online, and he's going to go through this presentation with you. But, you know, the board's aware of this. This has been a project that we've wanted to do for four or five years now since we first started the asset management program. We're thankful that the board was able to fund this. The money was very well spent. You guys are only seeing a glimpse of what the deliverables were, the executive level report, but I can, I can tell you, reassure you, there is tons and tons of data associated with that. Many more individual reports. The consultants worked very hard on this and we feel really good about the product that we're going to be presenting to you today.
Dan, before you go on, can you kind of walk us through the levels? Because there's levels of reports.
Yeah, I definitely can. And Dean will probably do a little of the same as well. But yes, there's one thing that was very important. Well, to go back, each 149 buildings were assessed. Each of those buildings has its own individual report, which goes through the condition assessment process, but also the different capital needs that are being recommended for each individual building. What you're seeing is all of that data rolled up into an executive level report for the entire city's portfolio of 149 buildings. But on top of that, it was really important for us, as the board's well aware, you're making decisions based off what funding type or what fund feeds into those capital needs. So it was important, we worked with the consultants to break out those different facilities based on their funding sources. So for example, a water booster station, we're not going to use general fund money to repair or upgrade a water facility, right? But we still wanted that condition assessment done for the water side. So you're seeing the whole entire report, but there are also individual executive level reports just for the water fund, just for the wastewater fund, for the cemetery fund, for the general fund, as well as this overall portfolio. So again, we didn't load all those up because you would have a packet of about 3,000 pages, but there's a lot of work that's, that's done there. As I mentioned, Dean, is that Supervisor Moncowski, is that what you're looking for? Okay. Dean, we'll get into more of the details, but I mean, essentially this is creating the roadmap for our capital needs for the future. But what you don't see is there's a lot of data behind it that's going to feed into our asset management software system. There's barcoding that was done on each assets, hundreds and thousands of assets for each individual building. So we can track work orders and costs associated with future repairs on that. So it's more than just what you're seeing here. It's, it's really going to be driving those decisions in our asset management program well into the future. I think that basically covers the overall summary. I'm going to let Dean Leonard, again with Faithful and Gold, kind of go over the presentation. Dean, are you with us?
I am done. Yeah.
Great. Do you see the PowerPoint?
I don't see the PowerPoint.
Okay.
No, but I, I can, I can run from, oh, there you go. I see it now.
Great.
Super. Um, yeah, it's, good morning, everybody. My name's Dean Leonard from Faithful and Gold. It's really is a pleasure to be here to present and break down these results of the citywide facility condition assessment program that Dan has just outlined there. This, this really is a proactive approach to asset management and I commend the city of Carson City for taking this approach. And I, and also want to thank the facilities department for, for their cooperation. This really was a collaborative approach. It was, as Dan alluded, it was a very detailed, labor-intensive project. And we, you know, we worked together well, no issues, and it was a pleasure working with them. So let me, before we get into the results, let me just give you some background as to why municipalities and cities are undertaking programs like this. And I've listed some questions here that, as I've met with many different municipalities, these are the kind of concerns that they have. And this is the, this program kind of addresses these, these questions. How do we prioritize the reduced funding allocation? How can we reduce the growing deferred maintenance list? What assets do we have? What condition are they in? Are they being used to their full potential? Are they compliant, et cetera, et cetera? So there's a whole host of questions that any city typically has about their systems and equipment across the city. So this program really provides you with that knowledge and insight about your facilities to make strategic decisions. And let me talk to the, to the graphic on the right hand side there. You know, we've, 2020, as everybody would agree, has been a unique year. And everybody is reprioritizing and taking a look at what their priorities are, what their budgets are. But facilities continue to age and deteriorate. And so when we experience budget constraints, it leads to backlog maintenance. And, and this is this growing deferred maintenance list that I, that I mentioned. And when you have backlog maintenance, we have to extend the life of the equipment. And when you do that, you know, instead of changing them at their optimum time in, in their lifespan, when you do that, we get higher volumes of breakdowns and reactive work orders. And so the, the focus then of the facility techs and the maintenance engineers, instead of proactively managing the assets to try and extend the life, the, in this emergency breakdown reactive work order Band-Aid kind of mode constantly and, you know, the running around in circles, but also it puts the city at risk of catastrophic failure of some of your important buildings. And go to the next slide, Dan. So let me just walk you through briefly the, the process of undertaking a program like this. And it starts off with this essential planning phase, assessment planning, where we sat down with the facility staff, we talked through the scope, made sure that everybody was aware of the methodology and the approach and what would happen. We refined the schedule. We asked questions about what issues are you experiencing at your different facilities? What should we look out for that you know about in advance? And then with that knowledge and insight, we then had teams of assessors walk those buildings day after day with electronic devices and capture that site data, inspecting every piece of equipment, every system, every building, all 149 buildings. So the site assessment data capture was intensive enough. And as, you know, and as part of that, we are looking for current needs. Are there any current issues, deficiencies that we need to look at and address now? Are there any health and safety issues? And then we evaluate, if, if, if the system or the equipment is running okay, we do a life cycle assessment then to say, where is that piece of equipment and its, and its lifespan? When's end of useful life? And how much would it cost to replace? And so we then map out that, that life cycle assessment. It goes through then an analysis of all that data prioritization and putting cost estimates against it. We develop then the comprehensive reports and goes through a QA QC review. And then we deliver this strategic needs plan that, that will provide you with, as I said, this knowledge and insight about your facilities then to start making those strategic decisions. Next slide, Dan. So these, these next two slides really, you know, we won't go into detail, but just, just lists the 149 buildings that were visited and assessed as part of this process. If we can go on to the next slide. As part of the evaluation process, we, we apply a facility condition index. And this, this is adopted by local municipalities and state organizations, really as a, as a benchmark methodology to, to try and evaluate the relative condition of each facility across the portfolio. And so we give each building a condition score. And the, the metrics behind that is the, the total value, the sum of everything that we've identified that's deficient or will be deficient during the planning horizon, which is a 10-year forward look of that facility. So we take the sum of that and divide that by the current replacement value of that facility. So if you had to demolish and replace that building is, is, is just a simple mathematical equation. And so 0 to 5% is good, 5 to 10 is fair, greater than 10 is poor, very poor is 60%. So essentially, if 60% of your assets and your equipment at that building are in very poor condition, you really need to start looking at either demolishing that building or looking at a future use, you know, selling that building or, you know, doing, doing something other with, other than pouring more money into that facility. And so as we look at the next four to five slides, we get this matrix of traffic light system, if you like, of the facility condition index against each building. And we won't necessarily drill down into any one of them, but the basis of this is we've got this facility list, the gross square feet, the current replacement value, the value of the current needs that we've identified and the value of those 10-year total needs. And you get there on the right hand side, the current replacement value. And so that's, that's the current condition index score now as we stand today. And then in 10 years' time, and this is important, assuming that investment is not made, then we know that the facilities are going to deteriorate and that score is going to get worse. It's going to be in poor, poor condition. So this, this kind of gives you that traffic light, this listing. So this, this kind of gives you that traffic light, this holistic view of your city buildings to say, which buildings do I need? You know, we've got a lot of buildings here, 149 buildings. Which buildings do I need to focus my funding level? Which are the most critical? And this, this gives you that, that overview of, well, let's look at the ones that are red or deep red first, and then we'll move on to the buildings are in fair condition, et cetera. Okay, if we can move on, Dan. And if there's any questions in between, please feel free to, to stop and ask those questions.
Yeah.
So this.
Hello. I, I do have a quick question, if I may. Can we go back to those? I, I just. Uh, yeah, any, any one, and I'll just pick, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm going to pick one because it, it's stark to me. And maybe you can just help me kind of understand it. So I'm looking at, just as an example, the Carson Fairgrounds Fuji Park Six Stall Horse Barn. So the current FCI is zero. The 10-year FCI puts it in very poor. So sometime over the next 10 years, help me understand how that building transitions from fine today to bulldoze it in 10 years?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And, and, and this is all just mathematical calculation. So, so currently at that particular building, we have not identified anything critical that needs are replacing now. So, so that, so that dollar value is zero, which translates to a 0% FCI score. So it's in good condition. But just so happened during the 10-year period, over the next few years, 60% of those systems and pieces of equipment are going to come to end of useful life. And all that funding hits all at the same time. And, and, and which, which then changes the calculation to, to very poor. So it's, it's, it's a direct relation to when, when is equipment scheduled to be replaced? And if it all hits within that 10-year window, that 10-year FCI then is reflected in the, the total sum of that particular building.
So, so that answers my question. So does that 10-year span assume no maintenance is done in that 10-year period? That assumes nothing is done to alter or change that in any way? So if, if for instance, and I, and I don't know if they have it, but there's an RTU HVAC unit that needs to be replaced in year two. If that gets replaced, then that changes the, the 10-year FCI value because that new RTU obviously then has more lifespan in it than the existing one.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, that's a great evaluation there that, that this should not be a one-time static evaluation. Now you have this raw data that as you change out pieces of equipment over time and execute some of the works based upon prioritization, all these metrics are going to be live and change, changing and updating you constantly as you, as you change pieces of equipment out. But this is, this is looking at worst case scenario, we, you know, we don't have any money for public works. We're sorry, we, we can't fund any upgrades over the next 10 years, which we know is not, is not reality. You know, we know that you will have some level of funding, but we, we can't predict, we don't know over the next 10 years what that level of funding is going to be. So we, so we look at the current situation and we look at the worst case scenario, if it wasn't funded in 10 years' time. And, and then, then there's all number of scenarios within, within that 10-year period as to what level of funding. And, and, and we're going to go on to funding levels and, and provide some examples of what the optimum funding level should be.
Dean, if I could jump in here for a second, I, I think what's important for everybody up here at the DIAS to remember is that these reports are simply tools that contain data. They're not the Bible. They're just data that we can use as a resource guide. Because of some of the examples already mentioned, the right column on here shows the condition in 10 years. If no money is put into those assets, which we can assume is not going to be the case, we will get to the funding conversation a little later. But what those numbers look like in 10 years depends on how much money we're willing to dedicate and put into the budget on, on maintenance. But also understand that there are different components or variables involved in coming up with these mathematical equations. This report is based on the replacement cost. That's how they're determining what your score is, is based on the replacement cost. But you could also look at the, at the useful remaining life, or you can look at the, the estimated useful life or expected useful life and change those formulas and probably get different numbers. For me, I look at the expected remaining life of an asset because in Carson City, our practice is if we have an asset that has a 10-year estimated useful life and we get to the end of that 10 years and that piece of equipment is still in good condition, we're not going to replace it just because it's at the end of its useful estimated life. We're going to continue to maintain that asset and get more life out of it. So I would just say that all of the information is in here. I've been through these reports several times. The information is all in there, but you have to match what your goal and objective is with the right data. And all this is doing is giving us a lot of data that will be useful, but we're going to have to depend on staff to actually look at these numbers and give us good guidance on what decisions we should be making and what the to, to match the right data with the right scenario for us. Because it's easy to get lost in this when you're looking at worst case scenarios. You can look at that and say, oh my God, we got to come up with $19 million now? Well, we don't. It depends on how you look at it and how you come up with the funding and how you, you know, this is based on the reserve study. There's a lot of variables here, a lot of information here, and we just need to sort through it and really have a good relationship with staff on how to plan all this out. Thank you, Dean.
If I could just quickly jump in too, that was one of the, I think both Supervisor Giomi and Supervisor Bonkowski hit it on the head, is one of the reasons we really, we selected Faithful and Gold is it was less about the static report that we got and more about the data and how we can keep that data dynamic and integrate with our asset management software in the future. So our facility staff can go out five years from now and do a condition assessment on a piece of equipment. And exactly what you referred to, say, hey, this is scheduled to be replaced two years from now, but we think based on our expertise at staff level that we can get another five years out of this equipment, we can go back into our database and our asset management software, basically bump that out and have this truly be a dynamic model. So that's, I mean, you guys both, both see, saw exactly what we wanted out of this as well. So just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, and I, I, that's the key to the whole thing for me, is that they've given us a baseline. And, and now we have the tool to, as, as Supervisor Bonkowski said, to, 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 to work with this going forward. And I think out of, out of anything else, that's the most important part of this, is that this gives us a tool going forward to weigh against the other tools that you have at staff and that we can give you as, as a board.
Go ahead, Dean.
Yep. So I'm nuts. Can you put the presentation back up? There we go. Yeah. So if you can move to the next slide. Oh. No, let me just talk to this slide briefly. So the, these two pie charts really then pulled together that FCI matrix into, on the left-hand side, current condition of buildings, FCI score. So with 51 buildings currently in good condition, 33 in fair, 62 in poor, and three in very poor. But again, assuming that no funding is allocated, then we see a very different picture of 15, three in good, 15 in fair, 109 in poor, and 22 in very poor. So that, that just gives you that summary of how many buildings are in good, fair, poor condition. Move to the next slide. So then how does that, how does that need map out over this 10-year planning horizon here? And so we've mapped out then currently for, for this current year, we're looking at 16.9, circa $17 million worth of immediate needs. That might seem a big number, but I've done this many times with other cities and, you know, we've had double that number for half the number of buildings. So $16.9 million worth of current needs, that's items that we've identified that need, you know, replacing now. And we'll go into the prioritization shortly. And you can see year by year, you know, the mapping out of that need, that need, it drops to 4.7, 6.5, et cetera, et cetera. And so the full 10-year capital need is just over $59 million worth of investment need to maintain these facilities in a good condition. And so then you, you can look at the data and say, okay, what level of funding do I need to get it down to, you know, all the buildings to fair condition? And then what additional funding do I need to achieve a mission goal of getting them all to a good condition? Well, this is the ideal scenario is, you know, $59 million. And then as, as we go on to the next slide, then we break that funding down, as Dan mentioned, into, into your different funds there. And so we, we'd obviously seen different levels of need and, and, and that's mainly based upon the number of facilities within that fund. And so, you know, the cemetery, current need of $227,000, 15.4 million for the general fund, et cetera, et cetera. So you can see that breakdown of current and the full 10-year need for the different funds. And, you know, we've got the data to break down that even further to, to look at individual buildings and needs within the general fund or within those different funds to, to analyze it more. And so if we move on to the, the funding scenarios, provided for, four scenarios. And, and the first one here really is if, if, if we had, if money and budget wasn't an issue and we could get whatever we, we needed, then we would have $17 million worth of budget approved right away. And you can see then the profile of that need over the 10-year period. But we always, but we know that that's not reality. And so I've mapped out some funding scenarios based upon different funding levels. And so if we looked at a scenario of $1 million per, per year, we can, we can plot how that $1 million impacts that need over that, over that planning horizon period. And we, and we can see that that $16 million is going to actually grow to $49 million. And so you, you're really not going to get your arms around this backlog maintenance. That backlog maintenance is going to grow. You've got a $16.9 million of backlog maintenance now with just applying $1 million. That's going to, per year, that's going to grow and grow. And you're not really going to be able to reduce that at all. It's going to increase year by year. So if we go to the next slide, we, we then look at a couple of different scenarios. And so scenario three looks at what if we funded $6 million, give it a boost of $6 million for the first three years and then drop it to $3 million per year? You can see that that helps, but it's not the ideal scenario because we're still going to have after 10 years, a $20 million backlog maintenance need. You know, remember that we started off with $16 million in the first year. We're going to end up with a $20 million need in 10 years' time with that level of funding. So that's not ideal either. And so if you look at scenario four, it gets us a little closer where we have $5 million per year. I mean, still not ideal. And the, the optimum number to try and eliminate the backlog maintenance over the 10-year period is probably about $5.5 million moving towards $6 million per, per year, which is, you know, I appreciate a sizable amount of money to take care of everything and get all your facilities back into a good, very good condition. But you, you know, you have the data now and you can work out an, an unlimited number of these kind of scenarios and, and what that might look like. So if we move on to the next slide, Dan. You know, if we were to plot here, 149 buildings, you just wouldn't be able to see the data. So, so we've narrowed it down into a, in, into a greatest need slide, if you like, by filtering out anything, anything under $10, $100,000 for immediate need. And we can, we can see now and start to drill down into which facilities have got the greatest need over, you know, currently for 2020. And, you know, we're looking at the Sheriff's Department Jail, Children's Museum, Community Center, thrift store, Public Safety Building, Clubhouse, et cetera, and City Hall. So that again gives you that visual ability to, to get to the data right away and understand what, what's causing some of these, you know, high numbers. Which, which buildings out of the 149 are the, are the highest priority? And, and we'll talk about priorities in a minute because you, you may look at this data and say, yeah, but not all buildings are equal. And we've not applied a metric score, a scoring criteria against how important that building is to, to the city operation. So you might look at the golf course clubhouse and it's, what, number six there, the greatest need. But you might say, well, yeah, I appreciate, we've got work to do there, but it's not as higher priority than the fire and life safety buildings. The, you know, the city hall, the public libraries, et cetera. So you, you know, you've got the opportunity to take this data now and add it, add in a new metric score and say, let's rank all these buildings. And it, it will reshuffle the pack and reshuffle these, these buildings of the greatest need because you're adding some other criteria, some other input from, from the city as to how important that building is, is, is to you in terms of expending those, those dollars. So on, on the next slide then, we see a similar picture over the 10-year study period. And the jail remains number one there, community center, public safety building moves up, sheriff's department, admin, city hall. And so you can see over the 10-year period, you're able to then focus in on those facilities that's got the greatest need. You know, sometimes we, you know, we know when we're looking at funding and repairs and replacements, you know, sometimes it's departments who shout the loudest who get the, you know, the lion's share of the funds or some of the high-profile facilities within a city. But this, this program really allows you to be fully independent and say, I, I, I want to look and I want to focus on criticality and the facilities with the greatest need and that this, this is what this data can do for you. So if we move to the next slide on prioritization. So to help you with some of those decisions for every piece of equipment, every system that we analyzed its useful life and its current need, we applied a prioritization score. And we've, and each assessor evaluated, when I'm looking at this now, is it, is it currently critical? Is, has it failed? Does it compromise public safety? Or should we recommend the upgrade to comply with current codes and accessibility? And so we'll apply a priority one if it fits that criteria. Is it potentially critical? Is it nearing the end of useful life that if not addressed now, will, will deteriorate further and add additional costs to if we were to replace it now? And if we leave it two or three years, it's going to increase the cost substantially of replacing it than if we do it now. So that's potentially critical. And then necessary, but not critical. It's, it's either coming to end of useful life, but it's, but it's not critical now. And, and all, it's, it's the, the, the type of deficiency, the type of action is, is not of a high priority. So we might put, you know, repainting of, you know, your public works buildings in that category. You know, your public works buildings um in that category. Uh your facility maintenance yards, so you you whilst it's looking aged and tired. And needs repainting, it because it's not critical. Um you know, it's not your city hall, we might categorize that repainting action as priority three, necessary but not critical, so you've got the opportunity to. Look at those and drill down to those and defer those to future years where budget might be um uh you you know, less. Um. Budget might be a a better option than 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 the sixteen million worth of need now. So if we look at the next slide, uh we we'd slice and dice the the data in a different way and so we're looking at the type of deficiency. Uh is it deferred maintenance? Have we identified something that that should have been repaired, some should have been addressed already, but because of. Funding needs and all all kinds of reason, we've just deferred that. Um and and so we we've categorized that as deferred maintenance. Ru- routine maintenance is your your routine cyclic cyclical um re- repairs. That that typically can be done by your facilities in-house staff. And capital renewal um speaks for itself, items um that that are coming to end of useful life. That um that that need replacing. We also look at deficiencies based upon functionality and so. Is this something that's going to improve the functionality and usefulness of? The use of that particular buildings, we know buildings change over time. Uh we know uses change over time. From this cellular layout to open plan and all all kinds of reasons why buildings change. Uh over the time and does it does the current setup and meet the functionality of the building, so we'll evaluate that. And you can see then the breakdown over the ten year period. Of those different categorizations of work. Um so on the final slide then, really, we just bringing that information together to say. We assess one hundred and forty nine primary structures. Uh there's a fifty nine million dollar need over the study period. Sixteen point nine million dollar immediate need. Fifty one buildings are in good condition, thirty three in fair, sixty two in poor, three in very poor. But over the next ten years, um you know, we'll see a different picture if no funding is allocated, twenty two in poor. That very poor, one hundred and nine in poor, fifteen in fair and three in good condition. Um that's kind of the summary of um. All the results so far, as as Dan mentioned, that you've got a lot of detail behind this and a lot of data. And you you know, if 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 you require, you can go not only into the executive summary reports for the whole. City but on a fund level, but then you've got individual, forty nine individual uh reports. For each building, so you can drill down into each piece of equipment, each asset and understand. What the condition and the life cycle and the cost to replace of that is. Um uh so thank thank you, any 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 questions on what we've um done there and articulated this morning?
Any questions from the board members? Go ahead, Lori.
So i- if I can just summarize, looking actually at that last conclusion page, it says three buildings are rated in very poor condition. From reading your document, you're telling me those would be potentially ripe for demolition. Instead of repair because they've. Uh the the cost to repair would exceed the cost to build new in essence. Am I am I understanding the report correctly?
Ye- yes, yes, it's essentially, once you start getting into very poor condition, uh then you should. N- not mandatory, but start to look at it a different way. Um how important is this building to the city? Is i- is this a building in very poor condition? That's just a small ancillary building to that to that um agency? And we can we can replace that easily. I- i- is it is it a a larger public library or or a police station? That's that's in that kind of condition, if you know, if it is, then let's look at that differently, how can we provide those services? Do we need um do we need a citywide? Um. Uh space utilization um to you know, to determine, uh can we consolidate departments? Can we dispose of some buildings? If we dispose of that, we're gonna eliminate the the capital need. For that particular building and also we're gonna generate revenue in disposing of that to. To fund some of the other capital needs, so it it really sparks a discussion. About y- your overall strategic plan for your assets across your city.
And then can I ask on the fifty nine million over the ten year study period? Does that assume only today's cost or is there an automatic inflation built into that?
Great, great question, so these these studies uh by industry standard are at. Current current net present value, uh because we can't. We can predict what those inflationary um uplifts are going to be over the next ten ten years and you know, we can apply. Um you you know, an inflation factor to give you an idea of what that looks like. But the industry way of doing this is to to say, okay, w- we know what today's current construction costs are. Um and 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 you know, we'll apply everything at net present value. And then next year, we'll do an uplift. Uh once we get from the construction index, um national constru- constru- construction index, we we know what that inflation factor looks like. And then we'll apply across the rest of the nine years. Um that inflation factor, so every year you'll end up um increasing that uh per year and every year it it will be at net present value. So from a budget point of view, you might want to. You you know, to just apply, you know, say a three and a half, four percent inflation factor to give you. A a rough indication of what that final number might look like, but we. You know, construction costs over the last couple of years have gone through the roof and uh it it really is hard to predict. Um if how how that's how that's gonna trend in the future.
Thank you. Okay.
I think that again, it's important that. When we look at these reports, that um we understand it's just data, it's very comprehensive data. Uh but it's gonna be up to us and staff to shape that data for our needs. So for instance, as Lori just asked, um you know, these numbers don't include an inflationary factor. Um Dan, did you ever find out if we had asbestos and lead paint reports? On facilities or or Dean, do you happen to know, either one of you?
I I apologize. Go ahead, Dean.
Go on, Dan.
I I was just gonna say.
We'll start with Dan and go to Dean.
Okay, sorry, Dean.
Yeah, yeah.
Um yeah, I I did not get a response back on that yet, as far as what kind of reports we have on assessments for asbestos.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you you then, you you know, the strategy is to. Then evaluate all the needs associated with that building and so we we we've looked at the condition of existing equipment and the life cycle of of those pieces of equipment. But we know that there's other potential costs associated with those facilities such as. Um you know, environmental costs. And and if you've got those separate studies, weave that information into this um into this study. Uh you might want to look at um a citywide seismic and and we 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 know that's it. And I'm not sure whether you've done that uh already, but that's a a costly exercise to do a detailed. Um one. One avenue to look at is to do a rapid visual screen and and that's to come up with. Um a seismic scoring um mechanism to score the the high risk, medium risk and low risk facilities for. Seismic um damage and then that allows you to narrow down into a small subset of. Facilities at high risk that you can then do a a much more detailed study, but seismic fa- factors in as well when you're looking at. Uh costs like this, ADA, if you've got a separate ADA study, um energy um. E- energy improvements as well, um pull all those uh. Costs and needs together into one evaluation and then that that really gives you the true. Picture across your city is to what what's the plan with these facilities? You know, we've got some issues, we've got some capital needs issues, we've got ADA. And that really helps you with those kind of decisions.
Thank you, Dean, so that reiterates my point that the numbers that you see in in these reports are just their guidelines. There's items that are not included in those such as environmental, as Dean said. And also, you know, the FCI scores again are based on. Uh the current cost of construction and replacement costs, which because of the high cost of construction today can skew those numbers. If we go into a recession in the next couple of years and construction costs come down. Then that is gonna change the score of the facilities, no matter how much money we do or don't put into those facilities for maintenance. So again, you know, we need to look at these particular variables, shape them to our own needs. And then make some decisions on on what we need to do and how we need to do it. And again, my personal feeling is that um. We need to also include a criticality prioritization uh in determining. Which uh deferred maintenance projects we tackle first. Uh I would also put more emphasis on uh remaining life rather than construction costs. So we can craft these reports any way we want. Um but one of the next major steps that we have to complete and we started it is to determine how much money is currently in the budget. That we spend on on maintenance and break fix. Because when you look at this um at the four potential funding needs and we're looking at. Uh as Dean mentioned, that the actual need, if we were to budget a stable. Um annual allocation would be five and a half to six million a year, well. I suspect that we're probably pretty close to that number now. In what we're spending, I mean, we don't have that final number yet, but when we get it, I think that we're gonna be pretty close to that, so we're not looking at an additional. Five and a half to six million dollars a year that we have to come up with, maybe it's a million. Maybe it's not, maybe we already are spending that and we just need to use this data. To come up with a long-term plan and implementation of that plan, which is what we've been working towards for the last three or four years now. So this is great data. Now, we need to take this data and we need to do our future planning. Uh both on the budget side and on the facility side to make this work for us. So so that's my maybe twenty dollars worth instead of two cents worth on this. Any additional questions, John? You have any questions, comments?
Just to add two cents worth, um good work by the staff and good work by supervisor Bonkowski to push this kind of thing. Uh and everybody else. Um um I'm not back there, standing back there to um. Have your backs necessarily, it's just colder than a icebox over here and I'm sure the mayor-elect can say, tell us, maybe the rest of you can too.
So I think um before we close the site him out, we also need to talk about. Funding, I'd like to hear uh everybody's thoughts on funding. Because that will give staff some direction before they bring this back to us. And so, John, if you wanna start and then Lori, we'll go to you, Stacy, and then I'll I'll finish up, but if you could just give us your thoughts on. The different funding scenarios and and how you see all this planning out or working out.
Well, that's of course always the tough nut question, um I'm not sure I have any. Nail to put in that coffin, but uh the truth of the matter is, we do need to fund ongoing deferred maintenance, which I've kind of harped on. And so going forward, uh find it find a methodology that works. And that kicks it in without gouging anybody too much, uh but I have no. I have no crystal ball for that, sorry.
You ready for my comment? So I I think that potentially this fiscal year, we have an opportunity. It's only a few months in, but the sales tax is outperforming the projection model. That we established for this budget cycle. We may wish to decide to tackle. As much of this as we can with the shot in the arm or the boost, I think, as I've read throughout this report. If if the asset management program is as important as I I personally believe that it is. Then we should take that excess dollars or as much as we can. And push it this year to that program to give it the boost, so that would be something I would be um. Amenable to looking at, I always want to have our ending fund balance, I I don't think you'll ever see me give up on that. But anything that's excess that lets us beat our ending fund balance goal from the sales tax, I'd be interested potentially in putting in this as a boost.
Um I you know, I think uh your point, Brad, about uh this data needing to. To to guide us obviously is is critical, but I I think the the part about. Um treating, because the the report right now treats all these buildings equally. And I and I think a first step in the process is um to to not, a- as Dean said. Uh just assume that all of these expenditures are equally as important. Because clearly, um you know, a storage building that would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars not as critical. As spending that same amount of money on the jail, so so I think that prioritization has to happen. Um you know, before we start to spend the funds. Um then secondarily, um you know, can we get to five million dollars a year? I I don't know, I mean, I think uh it's it's a lofty goal. Um because I think regardless of whether we spend. Five million a year and pull that from current break fix money. There are still going to be a whole host of things that are going to break before their life cycle comes up. So there's always gonna be a need to have that break fix fund sitting around. Um so I I agree with you, I think we should look at break fix funds and see what can be redirected to deferred maintenance. I also agree with Lori cautiously that um this might be a year where we can. Uh give that a boost because of our sales tax dollars. Um but I'm I'm not probably like her, ready to make that commitment yet. Um I think we need to see a lot more months of sales tax performance. And I think we need to be comfortable that our ending fund balance is solid and we've got a reserve there because. While deferred maintenance has to be done, um we also have to carry on the business of government. And I'm still worried about long-term recession potential, um where. We could see ourselves needing those sales tax dollars to provide essential services.
Typically, government encourages deferred maintenance because it's the low hanging fruit. It's really the easiest item for government to. To put off, to defer. Cause it's easy not to spend money maintaining your buildings, it's just an easy item. But we've seen what that's done to our facilities and to our budget in the past. So the idea of all this work that we put into this program for the last four or five years has been to circumvent. Deferred maintenance by building a stable funding source into the budget. Based off of a reserve and facility condition assessment studies. Well, the reserve study's done, the facility condition assessment study is done. Uh the next step, as I mentioned, is to determine the money that we are currently spending on. Maintenance, capital, uh break fix. Um by basing the amount of money allocated annually off of a re- uh off of a reserve study. It not only puts in an amount of money to take care of the work that needs to be done that year. But an additional amount that's held in reserves. So that you have the stability from year to year, because one year you may have three million in capital needs or maintenance needs. And the next year it may be six or seven, so the idea is that you're putting in that five and a half or six million a year and one year you. one year you use four, the next year you use eight, but you continually put in that five and a half to six million dollars a year and then we don't have to depend on the break fix uh account like we have in the past and it's a stable funding source that's just built into the budget from year to year. That's how you circumvent deferred maintenance. You build it into the budget, it's a cost of doing business and it's a stable cost. So we don't have these fluctuations where we have to go out and bond for $20 million because we've allowed deferred maintenance to build up. My preference, although rates are low, is not to have to go out and borrow money to implement the asset maintenance program. If we have to at the end of the day, when we get all the numbers in, then, you know, I'm, I'm open to that because it's an important program, but if we can come up with amount of money that we can put into the budget that is stable, that meets our needs over the long term, then that's what I would prefer to see. And if that's five and a half or six million dollars, I think it's incumbent upon us to figure out how to do that. Uh, I have no problem with applying the excess C tax from this year to take on um, the uh column of immediate deferred needs. So that would be a separate shot in the arm, as Lori said, separate from the stable ongoing funding source that we need to build into the budget. Um, and I think that, that covers most of my comments or, or direction. So one last shot at this, if anybody has any final comments or direction? John?
Well, I don't want to disagree with you because I, I think you're putting forth very good uh matters regarding how to do this on a stable basis, but whenever the interest rates are low, I like to strike because they won't be forever.
Understood. Okay, um, you have enough direction from us?
Yeah, thank you. And, and we are, once we wrap these reports up, we're going to uh likely post them on the Public Works page, probably a link to some of the reports just to make, put out there if that's the request of the board, so.
I think that's fine. The more transparency, the better. If anybody wants to read 3,000 pages of very fine eight-point print, hey, I encourage you. Dean, I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation and for all the data.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Okay. We are now going to move on to reassessing as the Board of Supervisors. We have already called to order the redevelopment authority and we will note that all members of the redevelopment authority.
It's my job.
You can do that. I was just going to note that we were all here and then turn it over to you.
So we're going to call the redevelopment authority to order and as uh, Acting Mayor indicated, all members of the redevelopment authority are present. Um, Desi, is there anyone on the phone for public comment?
There is no public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Then we will move on to item number 18, which is the approval of the minutes for July 2nd, 2020 and July 16th, 2020. I'd like to just note for the record that the minutes of July 2, 2020 were not approved within the 45 day statutory requirement or the next public meeting, but July 16th came upon and with public noticing requirements. That was uh too short for us to get that accomplished, so for good cause, we did not um, complete the July 2nd minutes on time. But does any, with that, does anyone have any questions or changes or recommendations on the minutes?
I would move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority for July 2nd, 2020 with a correction to the approved date on the signature page.
Okay, any further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to the July 16th minutes. Anyone have any changes? Got a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority for June 16th, 2020 as presented.
Did you say June or July?
I did, I, I said June. I meant July. Minutes of July 16th, 2020.
Okay, and there was a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And we'll move on to agenda item number 19A, which is for possible action and discussion on recommendations to the Board of Supervisors concerning the expenditure of $430,000 for the designing construction of the Third Street Parking Lot Rehab Project. Uh, Mr. Plemmel, are you here to present, please?
Yeah, good morning. Lee Plemmel, Community Development Director. Um, this item is before you to authorize the expenditure, as you said, for the Curry, for the, I'm sorry, the Third Street Parking Lot Rehabilitation Project. This is $430,000 that has been put in the re- that, that it was in the re- is in the redevelopment budget specifically for this process. Um, we have to, we go through this process to, to authorize expenditures. Redevelopment requires this extra step of you to actually authorize the expenditure. This one was pulled out from a lot of the other standard budget expenditures that you've already approved because it was tied up in the process of discussion of whether or not to include a shade structure with this parking lot project. And once that was decided at one of your previous meetings that the shade structure would not be part of this project, um, we, the Public Works can now move forward with the plan being to move forward with this project in 2020, early 2021, um, in conjunction with starting the Curry Street Sidewalk Improvement Projects that also come along this same frontage. And um, and so Dan Stuckey's here to answer any, if you have any questions regarding the project itself and that's a summary. Thank you.
Does any member have a question?
Mr. Giomi?
Um, Lee or, or Dan, um, on the, on the farmer's market and the timing of that, how, how are we, what arrangements have we made relative to that?
Dan, Second Deputy Public Works Director for the record, yeah, great question. Um, we are coordinating, communicating often with Brana over at the farmer's market as far as how that's going to work. We're still looking at how, it's really difficult because to start the job, you have to wait till the weather warms up a little bit and then the farmer's market, I believe, starts in June, so the window there is really short and then if you wait till after the farmer's market is over, then you hit winter on the back end, which is really a short window. So we've already started the discussions uh with Brana over there, kind of working out logistically how we can make it happen, but we'll, we'll have a good plan in place and, and hopefully it's not too much of an inconvenience, but they may have to shift to another side at least for, for a little while depending on what we come up with.
Well, if there's something that our, either the redevelopment authority or the board could do, I'm sure we'd, we'd be amicable to that. Um, and then has the, uh, Lee, I guess, question back to you, has the um, the shade structure been discussed yet, um, agendized um, at, at that committee level?
So, yeah, the, you're referencing, so the, the discussion on the shade structure at McFadden Plaza in particular was referred back to the Citizens Committee, um, and we did have a meeting that was, that was last week with some general discussion. So we've, we, we had a little bit of discussion about it, but it didn't go as a project for funding because at this point, it's not a project based on Public Works availability and other things they have going on. It wouldn't be a project that happens in this fiscal year, so we've kind of folded it into discussion for next year's, for next year's budget, for next year's redevelopment budget. Um, so, so there's not a, there's not a formal recommendation that's come out of Citizens Committee, but they'll talk, they'll talk about it more in February and make a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this side of?
Yeah, I just want to add to what Lee had to say at that last meeting since I'm the Board's liaison to the RAC Committee. Um, we did have discussion about this and a couple of people were restive about the appearance in their eyes that this uh Board had sort of superseded them and we explained that uh it wasn't so much that as that we'd made a decision regarding negative aspects of not having this late shade structure on the, on this, on this site and on the, at the BAC, but that it was still open in regards to whether they do McFadden Plaza. And I should report to you, there was quite a bit of discussion that they weren't real happy with the idea necessarily of putting on McFadden Plaza and I assured them, we haven't made that decision, uh, because some, some of the members were saying, what, what, what are we here for if we're not making any recommendations? I said, you can make recommendations, but we haven't made that decision yet. Is that correct, Lee?
Thank, thank you. I would agree with that characterization.
Well, I, I mean, I think the thing we said at the meeting was specifically that we referred back to them for them to evaluate. I mean, I, we, we actually.
Right.
Gave them the authority to make a decision.
They just didn't understand what was going on.
Let's come back on to the topic of this agenda item. Um, does anyone have any more questions on this one? Nope. Okay, then I'll accept a motion.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the expenditure of $430,000 for the Third Street Parking Lot Rehabilitation Project.
I have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh, Desi, we're going to move on to the final public comment. Do we have anyone on the phone?
There's no final public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Um, then we're going to adjourn as the Redevelopment Authority and I'll turn this over, uh, back over to the Acting Mayor.
Great. Uh, so we're now on agenda item 22 to reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and we will take a five-minute break and be back in five minutes. Thank you.